All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council's meeting this evening, March 21st. If we could all please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have these laws in Massachusetts. One of them happens to be Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, which requires me to let you know that this meeting will be both video and taped and recorded. And I'm curious to know if anyone here is videotaping or recording. Abby from the record is in the house. Thanks for being here. Otto, can you take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Leflam.
Present.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Eager.
Here.
Counselor Clune. Counselor Smith. Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here. Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Everybody seen the agenda? Is it okay as presented? If so, entertain a motion. Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. All right, we're going to go immediately to our first public hearing. It should go pretty quick, I would hope. Counselor Griffin.
Thank you, President Sullivan. Move to approve the public hearing. Move to open the public hearing to consider the utility petition submitted by EverSource Gas Main Replacement on the following streets: Ashley Street, Nelson Street, Nelson Circle, Guy Place, Elm Ave, Ames Ave, Smith Ave, Silver Street, Shepherd Street, Keely Street, and Upper Church Street.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and the public hearing is open. Does anyone here from EverSource? Could you come on up to the mic and give us a quick overview or detailed overview, whatever works best for us? Just state your name for the record also.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Ryan Barnes with EverSource Gas of Massachusetts, here to talk about the Ashley Street project, from what we're calling it. So, what we're doing here is replacing gas main and services on the streets that Counselor Griffin listed ahead of the town's plan to pave Ashley Street this year, in 2022. Through this, we are replacing our aging infrastructure, which composes of steel, cast iron, and some small parts of plastic main. And we are tying into our existing main on Upper Church Street, bringing new main down Keely, across Ashley, and then taking care of all the dead-end streets that were running south off of Ashley. And just to list them again, there's Smith, Ames Avenue, Elm Avenue, Guy Place, Nelson Circle, and then small tie-ins on Silver Street, Shepherd Street, Upper Church Street, and Nelson Street.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions for Ryan? Any councilors have any questions for Ryan? Okay. Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Public comments. Anyone wish to address the council on anything that will not have a public hearing on this evening? If you want to address the council on anything related to Whitney Ave, that would be during the public hearing. You're up.
Good evening. I am here to remind the Town Council that on Sunday, April 3rd, at 2:05, is Mittany Congregational Church's fundraiser with the Springfield Thunderbirds hockey. Here is an update on how many tickets have been sold so far. Lauren Blanchard gave me a printout of how many we have sold so far. Two tickets to Suelen, one ticket to my minister Bart, one ticket to Lois, and one ticket to Jeannie Braca. The parish cupboard will get a portion of each ticket sold. You have until April 2nd. Thank you. Hope to see the councilors at the game. It'll be a blast. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Dave Baynes. Counselors, I'm here to discuss the apartments on-
That's going to come up later under the public hearing. We have to wait for the public hearing on that.
Thank you.
That'll be opened up a little later in the agenda.
Thank you.
Roberta?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Roberta Page, Precinct 5. And some of you probably remember that I had a television program on local cable access channels, about seven or eight different channels around the greater Springfield area. It was called Talk of the Town. It is called Talk of the Town. And it's about people, places, and things making positive differences in communities. And so, it's been airing now in about five or six, seven, eight different communities right now. And I'd like to get it onto our local cable access channel. I've been trying to do that for about, it's going on almost a year now. And I know we don't have somebody full-time the way we used to. And I think actually it was former Mayor Sullivan who hired a fabulous person who was there at one point. And I don't know that we have anybody full-time. Apparently, there are a couple of staff people. And I'm just trying to find out or ask the council to maybe talk with the mayor to see how we might be able to get a full-time person, again, to be in the studio. We don't have anybody there who really knows about the cameras. I don't know if there are students. Apparently, there are two part-time staff people. I don't know if they're paid. I haven't been able to get any information, but I don't know if they're paid. I don't know if they're students. But I'd like to see if we can get our cable access channel going sort of the way it was two or three years ago. And so, you know, I know we get funding from Comcast so that we can have folks that are hired and are there. And I know COVID has put a crimp in all kinds of things these days. But I'd like to see if there's some way we can try to get that happening. There should be funds that, at one point, I think we had like a million dollars. I don't know what we have in that line item now, but hopefully that's sufficient. There are a lot of students now at various colleges and universities that are getting degrees in visual this and, you know, all kinds of things that are pertinent and relevant to now, to those kinds of things. So, we could reach out there for sure. I actually have a student right now, an intern, working with me. And he's doing some things you'll hear about later. But hopefully, I can get this program on, get some days and times, and get it scheduled here in West Springfield because it's particularly, this Talk of the Town program is particularly relevant to West Springfield, more so than the other seven or eight or nine communities. If I say the word Morgan, other than Morgan Road, maybe some of you might know a little bit about what it's going to be, what it entails. So, thank you for listening, and I hope we can get somebody on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public want to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go, I'll move approval of the regular and public hearing minutes of March 7th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Obstained, absent.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Obstained, absent.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Two abstentions. All right. Now, we're going to go to, I think, do we have, is, we don't have our student rep, is, before we go to any communication from the council, is Tracy here? Tracy. Okay, so any councilors have anything to communicate to the public at large? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, President Sullivan. So, I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate the St. Patrick's Parade Committee on the best Colleen float yesterday. And I'd also like to thank all the volunteers that worked so hard, day in and day out. Leading up to the parade yesterday was a fantastic time. I had a blast. And then, I just wanted to get some communications out to the general public. I've gotten a lot of requests recently on Bernie Ave, the crossway by Monastery. And I was able to-
That's, excuse me, that's Piper Ave.
Piper. I'm sorry. Thank you. I don't know why I have Bernie in the back of my mind, but on Piper, Monastery and Piper, the mayor has put in the capital budget this year to redo that crosswalk to make it safer recently. I don't know if you utilize that intersection often, but there's a lot of students that use that, both in the mornings and in the afternoons. But also, I've seen a lot of residents in the area using that too, so I'm very excited about that. The other thing I had reached out to him on is something that I've spoken with residents in the Mittany area for some time on. We're going to be looking at putting in a, this is also in the mayor's capital budget. We're going to be looking at putting in an interior walkway around the fields. For those of you that have ever been around that turn, it's a very tight turn. Taking frontage away in some people's yards would probably prove to be very difficult. So, there'll be some study that will go on this summer to look at the interior around that curve on the inside of the guardrail, so that you can kind of complete that walk around, a nice little pathway in the area. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to leave the council's communication for a minute. Tracy's in the house here. You want to come up and, continuing our program in front of the council of people who are new to West Springfield, having come up and introduced themselves, and maybe just tell us a little about you and what you're up to.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan. Thank you for inviting me today. I wanted to thank councilors Griffin and O'Brien for always coming to see me and giving me advice, and just listening to what I have to say. So, I want to thank them personally for that. So, I'm the director, I'm sorry, I'm the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator for the town of West Springfield. And what I would like to do is kind of like tell you guys some of the things I've worked on so far, and then some things that's happening in the future. So, recently, well, back in November, we had our first community conversation with the Muslim population, just to hear about what their needs are and what they're looking for from the town of West Springfield. And a lot of the things are common for the, mostly for the immigrant population, like transportation, ESOL classes, workforce opportunities. And so, with that, there is currently ESOL training in the library. But I did partner with HCC, which was my former employee, Holyoke Community College, and brought in a ESOL program that specifically has different career paths, like interpreters and in the medical field, and manufacturing specifically. And so, that class just started this last Monday. And so, they got that class started with about 15 participants, and I think like 35% are West Springfield participants. Because it's a DESI grant, they can't just limit it to West Springfield. And so, that got started last Monday, so I'm proud of that. We just developed an internal DEI think tank. And so, this internal team will first set a schedule or come up with a diversity statement for the town of West Springfield. It's going to be shared with the town employees and all of you for suggestions before we go live and put it on a diversity webpage, which isn't up yet either. I'm hiring an intern to help me with that, because that is not my strong suit. And so, I just got the approval and the job description that I will be sending to some of the colleges in the area to secure an intern to start that webpage. But hopefully, the equity statement and the webpage will be up in the next couple of months. We also had a, let's see, diversity equity training that didn't go so well. So, we kind of canceled it. We did a restart. And what I did is I set up internal meetings with employees in the town and just got their perspective on what's happening in the town, just getting the town culture, see what's happening. And there were some top themes that came out of those conversations. I had conversations with 25 people in two days. And I don't know if you guys want to hear those themes, but I can say them really quickly.
Sure, go ahead.
It's about five of them and then a couple others. So, some of the major themes was lack of diversity in hiring and recruitment. Communication with the mayor and executive level staff could improve. They want internal training, like new orientation training, mentorships for new employees, some training on IT and how to get through the whole process. And, of course, equity and inclusion training. There was a topic that I called fairness and cliques, because that's the terms that I heard. There's a perception of cliques and favoritism in some of the department. The aging population feel less valued. They feel that experience isn't appreciated, and the clique thing. So, other topics was work-life balance. Salary employees feel like hourly employees. There should be more flexible schedules, and working parents and families need more flexibility. Diversity isn't celebrated, and there's no room for growth. So, those were the themes that came from the employees. They're not my topics. I did discuss these topics with the mayor and the chief of staff, Kay O'Brien. And so, we're coming up with some plans to execute on those topics. So, that was interesting time, but I got to meet a lot of the employees, so that was great. We're going to have some informational sessions and some trainings coming up in the next couple of months. But I thought we should take a step back and do trainings on team building and morale boosting first, before we get into the hard work of diversity equity and inclusion training. And so, those will be scheduled for May. And we are having a World Diversity Day event in the town of West Springfield. World Diversity Day actually falls on May 21st of this year, and that's a Saturday. And so, the event will be that Saturday from 12 to 3:00. You will all get the information and invitations. It's going to be big. It's for families. We've already been talking to resource vendors. We're hoping that some of the town vendors come out and give the resources from the town's perspective and the school perspective as well. So, that's what we're up to. There's more in the pipeline. But I have a whole diversity goal list that I can actually just send to you guys, and you could take a look at it and see all the things that we'll be working on, because it's quite extensive.
Sure. That'd be great if you could send it to each counselor.
Sure.
Or send it to Otto.
Oh, and the diversity calendar. I can't forget to mention that. Did anyone take a look at it? Do you all like it? Okay. So, we got that implemented, and it's specific for the town of West Springfield. So, I thought that was a great accomplishment as well.
Very cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Any questions for me?
Well, we'll look forward to the email. If you can't, if you don't, you can always send it to Otto, and he'll forward it.
Oh, Otto, I'll send it to you, and you can forward it. That'd be great.
Appreciate it. And thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me. Have a great day. Night.
All right, any other communication from councilors? I do want to piggyback on, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor DiStefano.
I just wanted to take a moment to extend mine, I'm sure the council's well wishes, to Music Man Tony DeJury, who has taken ill. We received an email, I think all the councilors had received an email. I'm sure, like everyone else, I had, you know, I have great memories of Tony working with the Music Man for some of the Summer Concert Series and things. And again, I just wanted to wish him well and a speedy recovery.
Thank you. He started the Summer Concert Series in West Springfield, actually the first of its kind in Western Mass. So, he's the original, the charter member of that committee of ones. So, he's performed magic over the years. So, yeah, we want to extend our well wishes to Tony. Anyone else? I do want to piggyback on what Counselor Powers said, and send out kudos to everybody on the West Springfield Parade Committee and the Colleens, who carried themselves magnificently for the, over the course of two years, and the folks who built the parade. And it was interesting marching in the parade yesterday. The group, they had the largest cheers for them as they went by each group. And all the people on the sidelines was the West Springfield State Champions Soccer Team. They were, man, they had a lot of hooting and hollering for them as they came around every corner and made every step. So, I kind of wished I was marching in that group, but, but no, it was a lot of fun. And I also want to mention and send out kudos to the West Springfield Sister City Organization, who had the Minister of Education come to West Springfield on Saturday. They'd be like our Secretary of Education in the Biden administration. So, she came to West Springfield with a delegation, and it was great to see the Sister City Organization host them. So, that, congratulations to everybody involved in that, and also the Irish Cultural Center. So, good work. Anyone else? Okay. We keep going down the agenda. New business. Counselor Griffin, should we move the petition for the utility company?
Thank you again, President Sullivan. Move to approve the utility petition submitted by EverSource to perform gas replacement work on the following streets: Ashley Street, Nelson Street, Nelson Circle, Guy Place, Elm Ave, Ames Ave, Smith Ave, Silver Street, Shepherd Street, Keely Street, Upper Church Street.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Griffin, did the subcommittee take a position?
Yes, we did. We voted three in favor, zero opposed.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Counselor DiStefano.
Move to approve the acceptance of the financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, as provided by the town's auditors, Melanson PC.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Counselor DiStefano, any additional discussion?
Just to let the council know that the subcommittee voted three, zero, affirmative, to accept.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors? Any questions, comments, discussion?
No.
Okay. Go to a vote. Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Smith, do you have anything for us from the HR group?
I do. Thank you, President Sullivan. Move to approve the reappointment of Josephine Pire to the council on aging, with the term to begin March 22nd, 2022, and expire April 30th, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. Did the subcommittee take a position?
We did. We met this evening, two to zero. Approved.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Counselor Smith. You have another one for us?
I do. Move to approve the appointment of Melissa Henson to the Conservation Commission, with the term to begin March 22nd, 2022, and expire December 31st, 31st, 2022.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? Did take a position on this?
We did. It was two, four, zero opposed.
For approval, right?
For approval, yes.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Counselor Leflam.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I would just like to briefly take a second and describe my experience working with Ms. Henson. Since becoming the District 2 city councillor, I've talked and worked with Ms. Henson on a variety of issues. She's a District 2 resident. And in my experience working with her, she's very hardworking, pays close attention to detail, and is an effective communicator. And as a district city councillor, I think it's really important to have that close relationship with residents, so they can let me know what they're seeing in the community. And I think if reappointed to the Conservation Commission, she'll continue to show those qualities, and her reappointment has my support 100%.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go right to a vote. And Counselor Leflam, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor DiStefano.
Move to accept the Town Council FY '23 budget proposal as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any other discussion? Counselor DiStefano, subcommittee?
Subcommittee voted unanimous affirmative to accept.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. It's unanimous. Otto, you submit that to the city CFO. Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready for the reason everybody came to visit with us. Counselor Powers, do you want to open the public hearing?
Move to reopen the public hearing to consider the proposed amendment to the town zoning ordinance submitted by 10 registered voters relative to amending the zoning map to reclassify certain parcels on Whitney Ave from Residence A 2 to Residence C.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Public hearing is open, so just to set some rules of engagement. The petitioners will present once again. I know they were doing some studies and some other work, and let us know if anything's changed, update us on the proposal. After which, we'll let the public speak. You have a maximum of five minutes. Not over, and we would appreciate no redundancy in any comments. And then, the council will be allowed to question the petitioners. So, petitioners, you want to?
Do you want to vote to open?
We did. Did we, didn't? Oh, we didn't? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Counselor Leflam.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan, yes. Thank you, Counselor DiStefano. Guess I can't be a dictator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I've already presented. It's already of record. Do you want me to re-present what I presented?
Well, we received a letter indicating there was some geotechnical studies being done. If there's any additional information, we would appreciate that, or any changes to the project based on anything.
No changes at all. The good news is the geotechnical studies are done. We've got a green light to move forward. It's a fully developable site. There needs to be some additional work done to the soils, and that will be further taken up with Pyramid and the developer if and when the zone change is approved. Pyramid is committed, and the developer is committed. Mr. Zuckman's here again tonight. And they'll take whatever actions are necessary to maximize the amount of land of the 17 acres that are developable. As everyone knows, it's a 17-acre parcel, as I presented it before. The initial proposal is for 166 units. But anyone that's been up there knows Highland Ave and Whitney Ave, there are some serious topography issues, especially on the Highland Ave side and on the Route 91 side. So, because of the grade changes, the entire 17 acres will not be developable. The issue is going to be how much of the 17 acres will be developable. And once they determine how much of the 17 acres, then they'll be able to backtrack into the number of units that will be built. So, I can represent that it is a green light, number one. And number two, that best case of all 17 acres were developable, the project would not exceed 166 units. The likelihood is, it's going to be a lower number, and that's all I can tell you at this point in time. But the geotechnical work is done. It's a good site. Just needs to have some cleanup work done to the soils, and that's about it. The rest of the project is, you know, straight ahead. And be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone here like to address the council? And when you come up, just state your name and address or affiliation.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Dave Baynes. I live at 78 Cary Lane. And I'm here to discuss the property zone change from residential to what they're attempting to build here as far as these apartments are concerned. These so-called luxury apartments. Luxury apartments today, for people, are probably going to run about $2,000 a month. Now, you just heard that there's going to be somewhat around 166 units, maybe not as much. But for multiplication purposes only here, let's say there's 200 apartments there, all right? You've got two kids living in the apartment with mommy and daddy. You've got immigrants coming over here who don't speak any English. All right, so now you've got 200 apartments over there, mommy and daddy and two kids. You've got two cars, because mommy and daddy can't afford $2,000 a month for these apartments. So, you've got two cars each, times 200, that's 400 cars. So, you've got two cars each, times 200, that's 400 cars, plus the kids, that's 800 people over there in those apartments. Now, they've come up and they haven't talked about parking over there, but how many parking places do they have? They've got 100 parking places for 200 cars, 400 cars, whatever the case might be. Now, with the kids over there, you've got two kids in each apartment. You've got people who are immigrants over here who are going to be looking for apartments because they're bringing them in. Now, these kids can't speak English, so what's going to happen to our education department over here? You're going to hire five more ESL teachers to take care of these kids? You want to pay the bill? I don't think so. Now, another thing you've got going over there, you've got the police department. They've got to be policing this area. You've got Providence Place over there, an elderly housing complex that's over there right now. You've got police busier than a one-armed paper hanger up here in Down Riverdale Road with the drugs, with accidents, and everything else. They're going to have time to go up there to take care of those apartments with those people in them, paying $2,000 a month? What if mom and dad, one of them loses their job? Where does it go next? It goes to the state. The state says, ah, no problem. We'll take care of you. We'll pay it. And then maybe the state won't pay it. So where do you go next? You go to the feds? The fed says, oh, we'll turn it into a HUD program, just like the luxury apartments on Chestnut Street in Springfield. If you haven't seen those, take a ride down there, and you'll see what they look like. Luxury apartments. Now, you've got the fire department. Who's taking care of that? You've got one fire department on Morgan Road. That fire department is taking care of everything up in the Amistown Road area, along with the accidents that are on Riverdale Road, and there's plenty of them. Just take a look at the statistics and the record that comes out every Friday, and you'll see what's going on there. So you've got that problem going on. Now, what are you going to do? Hire more firemen? I don't know. That's up to you guys. That's up to the residents of West Springfield. They're not interested. It doesn't fit into West Springfield as far as these apartments are concerned. Now, you've got teachers, you've got police, you've got a fire department that's going to have to be upgraded over there if you're going to have it. Now, what I'm proposing for that land is this. You've got two things I'm proposing for that land. You've got a fire department, as I already mentioned, on Morgan Road. It's outdated. It's been there since Methuselah. Now, what we should have is take that land and put a new fire station up there to take care of that particular area. Now, my second proposal is we've got an elderly department over here, not department, but elderly thing on Park Street over here that's outdated, been there for years. You could take a look at Long Meadow. They just built a new elderly place for the elderly, which I'm starting to get close to if I'm not already there, and I might be visiting this place soon enough. You've got that beautiful place in Long Meadow they just built. You've got another one over here in Agawam, beautiful place. You go to Westfield, a nice place for the elderly to go. That's my second proposal for that property over there. So with that in mind, I would seriously consider, counselors, not granting this change in zone.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it, and I hope you make the right decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up. Again, just state your name and address and for the records.
Tim Smith, Highland Lane, West Springfield, Ward Eight resident. I see my counselor isn't here tonight, Counselor O'Brien. Actually, I wasn't going to say much tonight, much to the relief of proponents and opponents, I suppose, but by chance I'm even here because the notice I got, and the butter's notice of the next discussion, it inferred that the meeting is tomorrow night. Only my friend directed me to the town site and said, it's tonight.
Did you receive a revised notice?
No. No. So I'm just supposing a lot of people, particularly down in my area, which are very close to the issue, probably might show up tomorrow night thinking they can have a say in the matter. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Linda Parent, Belmont Avenue. And I'm not going to repeat what prior people have said or what I've said before, but I'd like to take you back to a kinder time, and that kinder time was town meeting. And town meeting cared about the residents of neighborhoods, and that's what you should be representing, not Pyramid, not a developer, but the people who live in that area. I don't live in that area, but there are people who are concerned of what's going on in their neighborhood. Look at the apartments at the bottom of Highland. They're a disaster. And you can get an apartment on Riverdale Road for $1,600 to $1,800 a month. So high-end apartments are going to be $2,500 a month. The other thing, we have some other open land in town, and I know this won't be popular, but off of Edgewood in a net area, they're tearing down all sorts of trees. Let's put apartments up there. I'm sure those residents would love that. I think our first concern should be the people who live in that area and who are invested in that area. Please don't forget them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Wayne Zuckerman, Sterling Properties. Statistically, and some people may want to hear it or not, the new construction, as far as our history and what we see in the pipeline, and one particular is our last community in Rutherford, New Jersey of 208 apartments, we generated approximately 17 children under the age of 18. Generally, new construction, which does command a higher rent, it's sort of a, and the reason of this property that we were enamored with is the fact that no new stock has been built in the town of West Springfield. And I'd like to say sort of these are field of dreams, build it and they'll come, but the fact remains that we've seen if you do build new construction, people will come. There are going to be a percentage of people who are looking for new apartments, new amenities, and who have the capabilities of, and prepared to have, I'll just say, not an exorbitant rent, but a rent that is qualified for new construction in terms of anywhere between $2,000 and, let's say, $2,200, $2,300 a month. If you go, as the other gentleman indicated, that statistically, if there were 166 apartments proposed, generally our blend is 40% ones and 60% twos. Therefore, the 60% on 166, should it be that, would yield approximately 96 two-bedrooms. You cannot have more than two people residing in a one-bedroom by law, and in a two-bedroom, the maximum you can have is one, on the second bedroom are two children, and they have to be at a certain age, if I recall, and they can't be of different genders. Nonetheless, should there be two times the 96, well, the property currently is zoned for 32 single-family homes. Now, if those homes are four-bedroom homes, statistically, you could have two adults and anywhere between three and four, perhaps five, children per house. Now you multiply that times the 32, and then you can multiply that by the amount of new teachers that would have to be installed as far as the education program. But we've had, again, I'm going to go back to saying, new construction does not generate a tremendous amount of young children as far as the education program. As far as traffic and as far as parking, well, just today, I can read this to you, Barclays does a study, and they did a study as far as what we used to do pre-COVID as a buzzword of having transportation nearby, walkable, let's say, train stations, bus stops as a buzzword. Well, as far as statistics, and they did this in terms of Long Island and in Connecticut, the bottom line is that Barclays interprets that the results suggest that suburbanites don't see regular five-day-per-week commutes in their future, and this is what is happening. People are working from home, and that's going to be a fact for at least the next 10 to maybe 15 years until people decide they don't want to be at home and they want to go back to their offices. What we've done in our new communities is create small niches in terms of people being able to have a home office, and this is really the wave of the future. So traffic, to me, in most of our apartment complexes, we drive in, we do reviews, and there's a lot of cars in the parking lot, why? People are staying home. Now, that doesn't mean that people aren't going to go out and go to the mall or go do their grocery shopping, but that nine-to-five or that primary seven-to-nine a.m. or four-to-six p.m. drive-by, it doesn't happen anymore. So that's my spiel for, in terms of traffic.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public hasn't previously spoken?
Good evening. Michael Fry, 173 Highland Avenue. I know I was here at the last meeting, and I don't want to rehash any of that stuff, but I wanted to just give my support for all the concerns that we have as citizens on that road. And one thing I did hear tonight that kind of concerned me was the fact that there were some remediation issues with the soil that I heard that would be addressed after the zoning change. To me, that seems kind of a little bit backwards, that we get this zone change and all of a sudden now we address the remediation of the soil and get into that where I think, my humble opinion, that those things ought to be addressed and identified prior to even having the zone change approved at all. So, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll open.
My name's Thomas Smith, 211 Apronmont Highway, Holyoke. I'm concerned about this. Well, I'm interested in this project because I go by the site quite often, and my interest is in land use. The developer had some pretty good comments. But I think the current zoning was decided by the people's previous representatives, maybe many years ago, and I'm sure a lot of thought went into choosing residential, mostly single-family homes, as the best use for the property. Quite often, people think highest and best use, and the term highest gets the most attention because it usually deals with the money, and everybody wants more money. The town wants more money. The owner of the property wants the most, biggest bang for the, you know, the most money they can get. At a meeting, previous meeting, the developer said that single-family homes weren't really practical because of the severe changes in the topography. I disagree with that because building smaller, maybe single-family homes that people can own, it's a much smaller footprint, so it's much less land that has to be altered compared with a large box-like, several large box-like buildings that are very heavy, and they need probably more soil stabilization than single-family homes. Three-quarters of the town, city of Boston, is built on tidelands, so a lot can be done to make land suitable for homes, and that's very well-drained up there. It's quite gravelly. In the equation, highest and best use, highest gets a lot of attention, but what doesn't get the attention as much is best use. Now, the people decided what the best use is for the land in its residential properties, single-family homes. How does, how would changing the zoning improve the best use of the land? I would actually ask this question. Who's the best use for? The developer or the citizens of West Springfield? Okay? The people who elected you and the people that you serve? Who is the best use for? You don't have to change the use at all. You'd be doing the developer a favor by changing the zoning. How would you, what would you tell your constituents that this is a better use for them versus the current use that it's, you know, it's zoned for now? So that's all I'd like to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Rogowski, 71 Apricot Hill Lane, West Springfield, Massachusetts, District Four, Precinct Seven. Couple of things. Let me address the Chestnut Towers things. This has been out here for a while. Let's use a more relative comparison. Devonshire Place in Holyoke, it's about a mile away from this property. It's 180 units, builders luxury, one- and two-bedroom apartments, built late 80s, early 90s. As of this afternoon, when I checked the website of the 180 units, they have one vacancy. There's a need for this use. Their build is luxury. There's a swimming pool, fitness center, balconies, in-apartment washers and dryers in a similar neighborhood that we're talking about right now. There's single-family residential, there's commercial, there's a nursing home, there's a school, and there's also affordable housing. So I think a much more, a much more relevant comp than Chestnut Towers. Certainly, we've, you know, there's, and some other issues that came up, you know, mostly from the folks at Providence Place, they've talked about profit. Certainly, a developer who's investing millions of dollars, absolutely, they're going to look for a profit. Anybody who's selling something, generally, they're going to look to make a profit. But I will tell you, Pyramid has not taken the path of least resistance on this project. One thing they could have done, which would have eliminated a lot of headaches on their part, they could have searched out a affordable housing 40B developer. If that had happened, we wouldn't be here today having this conversation. That would not require a zone change, and they could get in the ground without that zone change. So just let that sink in for a second. Pyramid searched out Wayne Zuckerman and Sterling Properties as the best and best use for the property as it exists today. You know, other things that came up with the Sisters of Providence concerning the landfill, they've said that this site is a landfill. Absolutely incorrect. They did the geotech studies. One of the things that came out, there are no environmental issues on the site. You know, there'll probably be some additional fill that needs to be brought in. Little history on the landfill, it sits in the Sears parking lot. Also, one of the comments from the Sisters of Providence that the neighbors had to bring that to the attention of Pyramid to get the landfill taken care of. Landfills are regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection, not by neighborhoods. That landfill was capped prior to the opening of the existing, the original portion of mall in 1979. There's a methane collection system that runs around it. It was upgraded probably five years ago, to a point now where there's not that much methane coming out. That methane is taken out through the system and scrubbed through charcoal filters now passively discharged into the atmosphere. The fill that went from the mall to the Whitney Avenue site was from the mall expansion, and no landfill debris was carried over to that site. The last thing I really want to talk about, which I think is the most important, there's been a narrative created around, created around this project and created around the neighborhood. People would like to believe that what happens at the Tall House Apartments and the Hillcrest Apartments, they've taken the broad-brush approach to just, you know, define the whole neighborhood as what happens at the bottom of the hill. You know, so it's now, it's become Upper Highland, it's become Prospect Ave., Prospect Street, Farmer Brown, Overlook, even up to, you know, the ends of Piper and Bernie. I mean, that broad-brush approach, I mean, is that what we do? What's next? Do we take a look at the town of West Springfield and say what happens between Highland Avenue and the Bel Air Inn defines who we are as a town? We should be thankful that there's people like Wayne Zuckerman that want to come in here and invest in this town because we live in this town for a reason. You know, it's a great town. We live here, we raise our families here, we send our kids to school here, we run businesses in this town. That's how we should be marketing this town, and there's this narrative that's been put forward, and again, the folks at Providence Place would bring forward the same narrative. Current challenge- Current challenges that we're dealing with, proposed apartment geographic area includes traffic, noise, pollution, homeless, setting up tents and residing in the woods, constant litter, drug paraphernalia, and deteriorating infrastructure. My parents lived there for three years. This was never communicated to my parents, never communicated to me. I don't think Providence Place was knowingly putting my parents at risk, but if you, you know, if you look forward, I mean, if, I stopped at Providence Place, you know, to pick up some literature. You know, in the marketing manual, Providence Place is an independent living retirement community set on a serene hilltop overlooking the Connecticut River, located just north of Springfield. Residents have convenient access to many cultural events and retail opportunities. And I move forward, quote again, "Providence Place is nestled on a beautiful hillside overlooking the Connecticut River in close proximity to US 91, Route 5, the Massachusetts Turnpike, and the Holyoke Mall." I mean, this narrative is being pushed forward, and, 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 and it's, it's, you know, I don't know what the agenda is, but certainly, I would say, you know, I would say to the folks at, at, on the council, let's not vote on this narrative, let's vote on the merits of the project. Vote that up or down. I mean, I was involved in a project in Holyoke a few years back. A retail tenant wanted to move in on the corner of Lower Westfield Road and Homestead Avenue. They needed a zone change to do that. A narrative was put forward, oh, we've never had retail on the west side of 91, there's going to be too much traffic, there's going to be delivery trucks in and out, the lot lighting is going to be, is going to be too aggressive for the neighborhood. Well, guess what? The narrative won out. That retail tenant did not go in there. You know, fast forward, that retail tenant was Big Y Supermarket, okay? We've got a good corporate citizen in Big Y, we've got a good corporate citizen in Sterling Properties, and so we fast-forward now to that corner on, on Lower Westfield and Homestead Avenue? Who's there today? Amazon. I think everybody in that neighborhood now, 2020 hindsight, would give their eye teeth to have a Big Y on that corner. But in this case, the narrative won out. And, and, and that's all I ask, is vote this up or down on the merits of the, merits of the, of the project. I mean, there's been the, it's been the spaghetti strategy that we've, that we fought. We've been, full disclosure, every time we've come to a public hearing, and on the, and coming at us has been the spaghetti strategy. Let's take everything we got, throw it up against the wall, and see what sticks. You know, we'll be happy to answer any questions, as we have at the past public hearings. You know, the last thing I would say that, you know, that Wayne did not address, and whether it's, whether it's, whether it's Sterling Properties, or whether it's Pyramid, we're ready to work with the town of West Springfield to mitigate some of the traffic issues up in that area. I'm sure in the last 20 years, I don't think, I don't think the folks from Providence Place have offered to mitigate any traffic issues, whether it's new signage, updated signage, whether it's a flashing sign like exists up at the top of Morgan Road, you know, switching over to Pisa Avenue. We would do that. And then, and then lastly, what, what are we not hearing from the people in this neighborhood? You know, we've heard everything else, what aren't we hearing? The neighbors aren't complaining about Providence Place, a multifamily development that sits up on Whitney Avenue. And the neighbors and Providence Place are not complaining about the Valley View Apartments that are up on Whitney Avenue, just over the Holy, just over the West Springfield line in Holyoke. So, and, and why aren't we hearing that? Because it's a non-factor, other than maybe some, some traffic mitigation, but that tells me that this project will fit seamlessly into the neighborhood, just like those two multifamily, multifamily existing units. So again, merits of the project is all, is all I ask. And as a resident, again, District Four, Precinct Seven, I'm a stone's throw away from this project, I'm in favor of it. I think it's, I think it is best use.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Oh, go ahead.
If you want to speak, you haven't previously spoken, you go first.
Yes, how do you do? Good evening. My name is Fred Connor, I'm Overlook Drive. I think he made, Mr. Rogalski made reference to Overlook Drive. And so I'm, wanted twice removed from the, the site. I've lived in West Springfield since 1957, basically, and I'm a resident of Boston, but soon to be a primary resident here in West Springfield within the next month or so, and my second home, which will become my primary home, and my, my, my residence since 1957, essentially, in West Springfield. So, I look forward to coming back to West Springfield, but is very alarmed at the, the news of this, this project that's being planned. And I understand, from reading the documents, that Mr. Rogalski is employed by the Pyramid, I believe. I could, I might stand corrected on that, but that was my understanding. And just some observations, and I, and some comment here, and I confess not to have been present at some of the other hearings and to get, gather the input that was shared by others in attendance there, but he made reference, passing reference to, you know, crime, the, 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 his comment that the Sisters of Providence made about the uptake of crime, and, you know, how the Toll House that is now the apartments, or motels, or whatever, however it's, I think it's apartments, and has, you know, devolved, and, and they seem to, kind of, I get a sense that he was saying that there was some hyperbolic commentary from the Sisters of St. Joseph about, you know, the trend, that being a trend in the future exacerbated by this development that I think boasts 166 units, if I recall correctly. But, you know, I can speak from experience, and I know that, you know, Mr. Regan, who had a lot of property on Overlook Drive, passed away and, and left some, the land to the town, to a conservancy, and they created a park in our neighborhood with a swing set, and so forth and so on. But I know from my experience that there has been problems in that park. It's, it's removed, it's, it's off the Highland, Highland Extension there, and, and there's been police problems, there's been drinking, there's been drugs, there's been, you know, some mayhem up there. So, so, so that, coupled with the, the knowledge that I have, limited as it is, that there was, there's some problems in the Toll House area of development there, on the corner of Highland and Riverdale, and I believe, and I think people in attendance here could reaffirm me, that there was a murder, I think, committed in, in that apartment complex within maybe a year, two years ago, I'm not sure. But, but the, the prospect of having a, you know, 166-unit development at this time, particularly when we're seeing inflation on the rise, and we're seeing open borders on the south, particularly with, you know, federal government sending people under cover of darkness to all corners of the, the country, and, you know, is, is kind of a background and to, that kind of disturbs, is a disturbing element in this, this whole discussion as far as developing this, this, this apartment complex and, that is currently zoned for residential and has been, and I had have no, I had have no issue with, you know, developing it as such. I think that, you know, he talks about, Mr. Rogalski spoke about, you know, the merits, looking at the merits of a development, I, I think we should do, look at that, and I, but I, I think we also have to weigh the demerits of a, of a development such as this. And I think, you know, when you have people coming into a, a development, apartment dwellings, they don't have the pride of ownership that they would have if they were a condominiums or a single-family residential development. And, and typically, I think in this environment particularly, what we have, again, as I mentioned earlier, this scalping inflation with no, no, you know, no, no signs of abating, I see just this having a high potential of devolving into, into a scenario that, you know, would be much less attractive than the one that is painted by the, the developers and the people who have put their name to this proposal. Interestingly enough, these people, I looked at the list, and they're from Peach Hill Tree, okay, am I up?
Well, we usually regulate it to five minutes, we're letting you run a little over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm new to this whole format, I apologize, but I apologize, but I-
I'm not sure if you're for or against the project, I just-
I'm against the project.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I thought that was clear, but yes, let me, let me go on the record as saying that I'm very much against it for the reasons that I stated, and I, I think that there is a project up there that is abandoned, if I recall. I think there was a, and I know that they're, McClure was a, was someone who lived there, he was a resident of, of Overlook Drive for years, and I grew up with him, and he had moved to this, this condo, I think, just north of, of the proposed site where this development is going to be constructed. And he moved back, and I had a conversation with him most recently, said that he moved back to his mother's, deceased mother's property and his childhood home because of the crime and the, and the sketchy neighborhood that it has become. And I believe, and people here could correct me on this, but I think that project just north of the site of this proposed development is abandoned now. So, anyway, let me go on the record that I'm most dead-set against this, and I would hope that the council would vote, vote it down. I appreciate you, Tom.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I come up, sure, as long as you don't speak on what you spoke to earlier.
Tim Smith, Highland Lane, Word Eight. I just wanted to examine the word narrative a little bit. There is narratives, but there's more than one. There's one narrative that's been well-established by your predecessors, that the best use for that property is single families at that part of town. There's also negative narratives put forth by folks like myself, who live nearby, we see the blue lights, we see the red lights, I see the faces of those people, because I deliver meals to them once a month. I know who I'm talking about. Those poor souls holding their cardboard signs, please help. So that's not a fake narrative. That's, that's, that's fact. But the developer has a good point, too. Maybe it's a good fit, just to be fair. Maybe it's a smooth transition. But, but the negative narrative isn't just the residents, the police, I think, voiced their concern, too. And they know the area pretty well. But what the developer's actually asking everybody here, or particularly our end of town, is to take a gamble. Trust them, it'll turn out okay. So your, whatever your votes come down to is, I think, who's taking the gamble and who Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to, as long as you're not, I don't want to debate, if you have something else to add.
I'll just make one point of clarification. I, yeah, I don't want to get into debate either, I think we hashed it out pretty well, but one point of clarification, I do not work for Pyramid. I was a former Pyramid employee. I'm here as a consultant, but I'm also here as a resident. Again, a resident of District Four, Precinct Seven.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I'm going to open it up to the council for questions, but I'm going to ask the first one. Thanks. One of the things that nobody's talked about, which I think we should, and maybe the attorney for the project can answer this, if this zone change was approved, it would be classified as spot zoning. Now, spot zoning is illegal on both statutory and constitutional grounds. Spot zoning occurs, you know, I don't want to get into debate, but, or explanation, but this would be spot zoning. So can you tell me how this would be addressed by the developers, the attorneys, and then maybe our attorney would like to pipe in and let us know if the, the municipality would have any liability approving spot zoning after he gives his speech?
Sure. I anticipated that somewhere, someone might bring this up, because it's been brought up before in other developments. This is, I'm very, very comfortable on this one. Case law in Massachusetts indicates that judges will make their ruling based upon whether the zone is compatible with the way the land in the area is being used. That's number one. Other factors besides the, the surrounding areas is the size of the land. Typically speaking, spot zoning, our implications for the case law, that they're on small sites and residential neighborhoods that are more suspect of a spot zone. This size parcel is 17.66 acres, it's a large, large, commercial-type plot. The physical attributes of this site is a, it's a scrub piece of property, as everyone knows, and so you've got to take a look at what's in the surrounding areas. Right next door is a 180, probably 200-unit Valley View Apartments on the Holyoke-West Springfield border, but directly above us this site. So there's an apartment complex right next door, I mean, literally, they share the same, they share the same land. In addition to Valley View Apartments, you've got the Providence Place, Mary's Meadow, Senior Housing, down the bottom of the hill, you've got Dunkin' Donuts, convenience stores, other apartments. So the zone change, in this particular case, can be viewed as a, to promote public welfare. Going back to the Town of West Springfield Master Plan in 2009, it incorporated, in its master plan, one of the objectives was to ensure comfortable and affordable housing in West Springfield. This is a step in the right direction. This is, this is a project that I think is the first upscale apartment complex that West Springfield's ever seen. It would fit in there fine. In addition to the master plan, the, in 2018, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission studied the housing needs for the area, and its finding, there was a great need for affordable housing of all types in West Springfield. In addition thereto, Governor Baker has made housing production one of his priorities in, in light of all the single-family housing prices that have skyrocketed throughout the Commonwealth of Mass. So there's a very real need for this type of housing in West Springfield, and I 100% confident that this would not be classified as a spot zone relative to this particular area, and the size of the project, and the abutters. I hope that answers your question.
And our Assistant City Solicitor, what kind of liability would the municipality be subject to if we approved spot zoning?
Regards to liability, I would just say that we would have to defend a challenge if one was brought.
Yeah. So we would, we would have to defend it, or they would?
We would have to defend a challenge, we would have to defend a challenge if one was brought regarding, saying that there was spot zoning.
How long does someone have to file a challenge?
I'm not sure.
Twenty days after the approval.
Twenty days after the approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we would defend, I mean, I, I know the town, I, I've done zoning for the last 39 years, I've been to the appeals court on a number of zoning cases. You're named as a, as a party, obviously, that, because you approved the, the zone change, but the onus would, would shift, obviously, to the developer to defend, and I'm very comfortable defending this, this issue. Very, very, this is, it's not even close.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other councilors? Counselor Eager, you had a question?
Yes. I think one of the things that triggered a lot of these individuals to speak up was the inconsistency in the drawing, especially in relationship to, with the parking spaces in relationship to the number of units that you, you showed us.
Right.
And when I come back to it, I, I, that's one of the things that gets my attention. How can you explain that discrepancy in a way that makes, it makes us view as a complete thought?
I don't know what the discrepancy is, but, but, but just, just, just to go back, you're not approving the project, as you well know, you're approving the zone change. The project was, the preliminary drawings that we gave you was just, you know, best-case basis, if we were to develop the entire site, and I'll, I'll let Wayne address the, the parking issue better. The, the project could not be approved at the planning board level if it didn't meet all the parking requirements. And depending on the style of the, of the apartment buildings that they're going to build, those determinations haven't been made, a number of his projects have indoor parking. These, these buildings could have indoor parking, they're going to definitely have some surface parking, but there will be ample parking for the, for the number of units to be built. We don't even know how many units can be built, depending on how much developable land we can get. As, as I indicated earlier this evening, 166 is, is, is the cap. I, I personally don't believe that we're going to get anywhere near that number, so it's going to be a lower number, and then it all, it's all going to factor down as to the number of parking. But this, this, if this zone change goes through, the, the next step is to go back to the planning board, which you've already been in front of the planning board, which, just for the record, I, I don't want to get into my closing, but for the record, the planning board was voted unanimously for this project, they thought it was a great, great project, and they were looking forward to having us coming back, and as well as the mayor of West Springfield is very supportive of the project as well. So we will address the parking, there's no question, that, that will be a non-issue.
Okay. Anyone else? Other questions from the councilors? Go ahead. Counselor Griffin?
So, based on the comments tonight, I'd like to certainly-
So, based on the comments tonight, I'd like to certainly reserve any questions that I may have for a future date. So I don't want to make any comments tonight for or against the project. But I want, I would like to have the council move this forward until the April...
So move to continue the public hearing?
Yeah.
Move to continue the public hearing to the next...
And the other, the other thing that confused me, and I apologize for the confusion for anybody, did we send out an abutters notice and then have to resend, resend it again?
Yes.
So for that reason alone, I would absolutely...
That was going to be my recommendation as well.
By the way, I'm sure you would, too, Mr. President.
Absolutely.
So don't think like, don't think like I'm stealing any thunder here, but I can imagine that you would probably feel the same way.
So did you just move to continue the public hearing to April 4th at our next regular scheduled meeting?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing to April 4th.
I, Mr. President, if I, I'm out of town on April 4th. Come back on the 5th. Can we go to the following week? Or two weeks? Do you need every two?
Yeah.
Well, let me ask our Assistant City Solicitor, once we have a proposed zone change in front of us, how long do we have before we have to act on it?
We can waive, we can waive that.
We would need it waived, so we don't go over the deadline.
We will waive that.
Counselor DiStefano?
Just to speak on the motion that's in front of us. While certainly I would want to afford anybody that had, you know, an opinion to be able to share it, we'll be bouncing this thing again, you know, which we've already done. I can't imagine that there's going to be anybody who is going to come before us with such an impassioned plea that it's going to sway what people already, I think, most of the councilors have what they would consider sufficient information to make a decision tonight. Again, we're, if we continue the public hearing, we're not really continuing for anyone to come and provide any additional information. It's just allowing people to come forward and share their reasons why they're either for or against the project. I, myself, as I've done in the past, see no reason why we would want to continue this yet again for additional individuals to show up. I think the consensus from the townspeople who live in that area is overwhelmingly clear that they're against it. I don't know what else we hope to glean from people who show up from that area by postponing this vote, so I'll be voting no.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Eager?
Yes, so, at this point, I think we've got good sample size. I, I hear a lot of good points from the petitioners, but I also hear a great deal of people from, voices from our citizen advocates. And I think most of us have made our decision. And we heard enough, we heard a lot negative. We do know the business reasons for this place to be built in its location, but at this point, I don't see getting more input would change it. And, and yes, so I just figure, for the sake of time, we should just understand, the petitioners do need to travel, and we should make an up and down decision either way.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
President Sullivan, if the petitioners are agreeable to continue it and the councils are agreeable to continue it, it would be fine.
Okay. Thank you. I will say this, I do have a concern about our notices, not that, the notices went out with the wrong date on them, as Mr. Smith indicated, and the petitioner actually brought to my attention, in fairness to them. So I am a little nervous, especially based on the previous protocol debacle, closing the public hearing now, and I don't disagree with my fellow councilors about maybe to get more information or not, and I wouldn't allow anybody to come speak about the same thing they've already spoken. However, having said that, I would probably, and I'm not supposed to say this from the chair, but the absence of the Vice President, I'll say that, you know, I'm of the opinion that we should probably continue the public hearing and we'll take an up and down vote at the next meeting. So, having said that, are we ready to vote on the motion? The motion to continue the public hearing to April...
Fourth.
No.
On 21st.
April... Eight, no, it'd be April 19th. And I won't be here. So you guys will be on your own.
Well, obviously, I, we need the council. I mean, we can't have half of a council to vote on a zone change.
Well, then, I mean...
I mean, I'll go out till, you're all going to be here. I mean, if it's going to be the first week of May, then let's go to the first week of May, whatever the case may be, but it's...
Kicking the can down the road. I mean, do you have to be here for the April 4th meeting?
No, I don't have to be here. I'll just say my, I mean, I'll just, I'll say my conclusory comments now, they'll be on the record, and...
Why don't we do that? Why don't you have to do those and we'll...
Sure, sure, and just...
There's a motion on the floor to the fourth.
No, that's fine. You could, you could go to the 4th. That'd be fine. I have no problem with that.
I'll turn to DiStefano.
Just a point of procedure. You have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I know.
Either the motion gets rescinded to allow him an opportunity to speak additionally to the, to the public hearing, which hasn't yet been closed, or...
So we would have to have the who seconded it. Counselor Griffin moved it. If you want to hear his closing, you'd have to remove your motion and the second.
I'd be glad to do so.
Who made the second?
I did.
Okay. All right, the motion's been removed. Go ahead.
Sure. Since I won't be here on the 4th, I'll be very brief. This is, this is very brief. As everyone knows, I've been doing this for a while. I've been doing zoning work for almost 39 years. I've been in front of this council many, many times, and I, I worked on a couple of very big zone changes. I think Counselor Griffin might have been on one of them with the Raymore and Flanagan Zone Change on Riverdale Road. That was a very big zone change. And also for the Belize Honda dealership in West Springfield, and there was a lot of issues that we dealt with back then. But this is the first time I can honestly say, in my, in my short career, that I've ever heard a pushback from an elected official saying, "Don't come to West Springfield. It's a bad place. It's a dangerous place. Don't come to West Springfield, because we've got a problem down the bottom of the hill. We have crime, and this might be the end of the town. It's not the most favorable." And I think that's just plain wrong, just absolutely plain wrong. This town, this council should be welcoming Mr. Zuckerman and Sterling Properties, which you have seen from, from the projections that has shown. He's an experienced developer. He builds beautiful stuff. If I were on this council, if I was in West Springfield, I'd be welcoming a developer of this nature. This is a great project. There's a need in West Springfield. West Springfield's never had anything like this. I would live there. I think anyone, anyone on the council and anyone in the neighborhood would live there. And this is not a high, a high residential neighborhood. I think there's about eight or nine houses left on Highland Ave. Everything else around there are apartments, Providence Place, commercial development. And if there was ever a time in the history of West Springfield to change things on that end of the town, this could be the project that does it. Instead of looking at the negatives in West Springfield, and instead of saying, "This is a bad, bad place to be, don't come to our town, don't, don't come and develop in our bad neighborhood," you guys should be opening your arms up, saying, "Please come. Please clean up the area," because maybe the next guy will clean up the bottom of the hill, and the next guy will clean up that end of Riverdale Road. And next thing you know, that end of the town could look great again. So I think this is a great project. I don't see anything wrong with it. It fits seamlessly. I was on this, this site seeking a zone change before the mayor and city council former government, the old town meeting. That's when the Hoyok Mall wanted to expand. That's, the mall ended up itself. Now, in hindsight, it's kind of a joke, because malls are going down the hill, but they wanted to put parking garages up there. And it didn't go through by a vote or two that particular night. But since then, over the last 27 years, that site has sought vacant. If there was ever going to be a single-family residential development up on that site, every builder, we've spoken to every, every builder in town. They've all looked at that site. It's not happening. It hasn't happened in 40 years. It's not happening tonight, and it's not going to happen tomorrow. So that's a pipe dream to say that our forefathers said, "That's a place where we want residential housing." It's never going to happen. If it's going to happen, it would have happened in the last 40 years. That's not going to happen. What we do have is a developer that's going to come in and build something that West Springfield's never seen. I think it's a, it's a hell of a project. I think this council would be crazy not to approve it, and I think the mayor's fully supportive, the planning board's fully supportive, and it could be one of the best things that were built in a long time in that particular side of the town. So that's my closing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Griffin?
I would move to continue the public hearing until April 4th. And I can give you my reasons.
Well, after we get the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving the second in for the discussion on the motion. Counselor Griffin?
The reason why I want to move it to April 4th is, again, much like you've said earlier, President Sullivan, we've closed the public hearing. We reopen the public hearing. We send abutters notices with the wrong date. If we're in government to hear from the people, and I understand Counselor DiStefano's remarks, and I, I can't disagree with his remarks, because I don't think we're going to hear anything different from anybody else. But from a standpoint of open and transparency, this is the reason why I want to continue the public hearing. If not, I'll just object, but I am not objecting at this particular point in time. I'm asking the councilors for their indulgence, based on public sentiment, to, to move forward to April 4th, based on the mistakes that we've made. Not on, not, not the public, not anybody else, we've made, inclusive of myself. So we're all councilors, right? To allow, to allow, if we've done something, and God forbid, and we did have some, some people show up on, on different types of meetings, and it's not, that was, that was not our fault, by the way, but I know that this has taken on a life of its own, and we collectively probably might have the same opinion, but I don't know that. So that's the reason for my, for me asking for all the councilors' indulgences.
Anyone else? Counselor Powers?
I don't want to speak for the petitioner's counsel, but as an attorney myself, I am not sure if Attorney Seibert was just trying to work with us, but I would really want to be present and, not to speak with you, but I just think that if another question comes up, if something else arises, having legal counsel there is, is important. So if you're okay with that, great, but I'm not one in favor of kicking it down the road at all. But I think that there are sometimes certain circumstances that arise to that requirement. I just want to say that.
So Counselor Powers, are you suggesting that there would be another date, or to close it, and I'm not sure what, or close it tonight?
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's the general continuance to the April 4th meeting, where the petitioner's counsel won't be present. I don't, I don't agree with the date, so...
It's the date in particular.
The date, the date is the issue I have. I think the reason, I think it needs to get kicked down the road. I think it needs to be continued because of the improper notices that went out. Whether someone shows up tomorrow night or not, I think we do need to afford that to anyone that's interested, even if corrective notices went out. And I do appreciate the petitioner bringing up the fact that the initial notices had the wrong date, and I think we need to give them some credence for that. But just my, just my two cents on continuing it to the next meeting.
The 19th.
Yeah, and I'm not, yeah, well, yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
So, I'm a skeptic in the pursuit of knowledge, and I'm also a contrarian by nature. We're postponing potentially again tonight, whether we vote to do it or not. It seems, it might be somewhat irrelevant, because it'll be potential motion to postpone or whatever. Here's what I want to know, though. As a counselor, as a resident, as somebody who feels for all the people who showed up tonight, when did we realize we sent out the wrong notification? And why wouldn't we have led with that tonight, rather than spending roughly an hour hearing all kinds of testimony, only an hour later to then tell everybody, "Oops, we made a mistake. Let's come back in a month to rehash it." Why didn't we open the public hearing, making some kind of an announcement that there's a potential snafu here, and move to continue right then and there, rather than killing an hour's worth of everybody's time and doing it now?
Well, I can answer part of your question. I don't, I don't think we killed an hour's worth of anybody's time. I think we got valuable input from the petitioner and those people who showed up.
They would have been here to the next meeting to present all of that.
I understand, but it was posted that it was going to be tonight.
Yeah.
So they showed up.
Right, so, so we show up in the beginning, and then we say, "We've, we made an error. We're going to have to do this," because there...
So you wanted me to send everybody home who drove from New Jersey or, you know, came out of their homes? You wanted me to have everybody show up and send them home?
What, they're going to have to all come back, potentially?
They don't have to.
Who's drove from New Jersey?
I came from Boston.
And I'm imagining the only people who drove further, other than the gentleman who came from Boston, are the petitioners, which, oh, well, cost of doing business in West Springfield, if you want to make your presentation, you got to come back, because we made a mistake. I just, I'm thinking about all the other people who showed up tonight and sat here and waited to speak, and now they're, they're being told, "I know if I spoke tonight, my words may not resonate as clearly with the council a month from now. I'm going to want to come back and share again, maybe not the exact same story, but my sentiment for being opposed or in favor of this." I just think it's unfortunate that, again, we have an issue with the posting of the meeting, and, you know, this is what everybody showed up for, and we're going to have to redo it again.
Have to redo it again? They don't have to come back. Counselor Eager?
Yes, so, I understand Counselor Griffin's, and I understand Counselor DiStefano's arguments. When it comes down to it, it's trying to figure out what does, what's the most correct, and more importantly, it makes, it's fair for the most people. And, and Counselor DiStefano's argument distills to, "We got a large sample size. We know exactly, we, I've counted it, and except for two emails, every comment I got was against it. Do I agree what was against it? No. But at the same time, we heard that in plerotude. I also consider the effort the petitioners are making coming here, okay? Whether it's up or down, they deserve a vote, okay? It's very expensive to come to these meetings. If we're going, if we're going to vote it down, let's do it now. If we're going to vote for it, let's do it now." That said, Counselor Griffin makes a good argument, there was a small injustice. But that said, we also reopen the debate to hear more comments. And this is the first time all the petitioners are here, doing the, this is probably the, I don't see, I, I'm doing the vote count in my head. I don't see a possibility where our votes are going to change when we add two more councilors here. And I, I definitely, and I, except for those two people that emailed me, voting, supporting this project, I haven't heard them or seen them, they haven't called me or they haven't wrote to me. We got a lot of data, and yes, there was injustice with the mailing. And that is, and that is a good argument, but at the same time, I think it would be a greater injustice if we delayed this vote. Thank you.
I do want to clarify one thing. The mailing is not obligatory under the law. The posting and the publication is, so the mailing is a courtesy, which was unfortunate it had the wrong date. And it was, Otto, was it remailed?
Yes.
So anyway, any other discussion on the motion to continue the public hearing? Counselor Powers?
It's somewhat of an alternative, instead of possibly the end of April or May, and we could agree to have a special meeting next week, where perhaps the petitioner's counsel, maybe the petitioner himself, doesn't want to come back up to Western Mass, but it seems like we would have a majority of the council, certainly get notices out on time, and not delay anyone's plans for a further month.
What's that? What does that do to... Yeah.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, unless you want... We have a motion on the floor, unless you want to amend it. No, you can amend the motion.
You can amend it.
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to amend, I guess, first, before I ask this. Is the petitioner's council available?
Next one's next.
So, I guess I would like to, based upon what has been said, make a motion to amend the motion on the floor, so that we continue this public hearing to Monday, March 28th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any additional discussion on the motion, Counselor Powers?
Seems like it might be reasonable from a timeline standpoint and from having representation here, and allowing those that may have been confused by the act the town tried to assist with by correcting that.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend the date of the meeting? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to vote on the proposed amendment to the main motion. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Now, we have to vote on the main amended motion. Any discussion on the main amended motion? Seeing none, Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
No.
Counselor Sullivan, vote yes. Five in favor, two opposed. The motion passes. And we have to do a posting right away. We have one other item to take action on this tonight is in front of us. Counselor Powers, you want to move the, or is there any objection to taking action on this tonight? You reject voting on this tonight?
I would, if, yeah, I would object to voting on this, but based on what we just...
Okay. Okay, so...
If we had a special meeting, it would take...
Mr. Griffin, can you please turn your microphone on?
Thank you.
So, I would object to voting on this, this evening, meaning that if someone wanted to object of a further date, it would take four councilors. So, we would have to either take action on the, the next meeting, or four councilors would have to object again.
We just voted to move the public hearing to the next meeting.
Right.
All right. So, we'll be taking no action on it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.